County Plan Commission's order. I believe we have all our members here except for one this evening who we have quorum. Our attorney had called and he's not going to be able to make it this evening. He went home early from work sick possibly, so he's not going to make it. Has everyone had a time to read the minutes? Any additions, changes? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes. First, we have second.
I have second.
All in favor? Opposed, same sign? Then it's approved. Jim, I think we're probably ready for... There he is. I thought you said come back. Sorry, didn't mean to... Ready for you on bringing us an update on the zoning enforcement on Folks Road and we have the Depp's Island Whitten property and 933 West Reed property to start with.
I went out to visit the location on Folks Road. That had to do with complaint where some people were allowing their son to stay in their barn as a second apartment on the property which is against the code rules and regulations for our county. I went and talked to the owner and he said they were going to stop that. So I sent them a letter to reiterate of what we talked about and we're just going to take his word for it that they're moving him back in the house and out of barn.
Okay.
And that's all we can do for now unless I get another complaint.
Who is it? What's the name on the people, Folks?
I do. A second. I remember what I do. Yeah, it's right here. It's Bunch, Richard Bunch.
Bunch.
Richard Bunch.
Yeah.
And then on the Witham property?
Hamlin?
No, Witham is the next one.
Witham was... The Witham property was one where he started... It's off of Highway 62 on the other side of Kanan. He was adding on to his house in two different locations on the house. One looked like a porch, the other was attaching the house to the garage. So I stopped, left my card. He called me back and said that he was going to do all his work under the law cabin rule. And so you can do the work under the law cabin rule, but you have to adhere to the rules for that. But you do have to come in and get a permit, otherwise we can't assess the property that's being approved. And it didn't appear that he understood that. So I sent him a letter that stated that so that we had a starting point to try to get him to get his permit. And that's where that stands. It's not 30 days hasn't gone by. I gave him 30 days on the letter to take care of that and he hasn't contacted me yet. So we'll find out. We've got 30 days. There'll probably be more to come on that.
And to meet that law cabin rule is almost impossible, isn't it? Today's now, in today and age, without reads as far as all the material coming off the property and it's...
Well, yeah, the owner of the property is supposed to do all the work himself. It is a couple of things that are contrary to what the Indiana law is. For instance, any plumbing work now has to be done by a certified plumber licensed and registered with an active permit. So if the guy doing the work doesn't have that, how can he even work on the plumbing part? So, and I did talk to Pat about this. He sent me a case that had judgment for the county, and I think it was Jennings County, where somebody wanted to do this, but they wouldn't do the work themselves, so it fell into form. But, you know...
We're waiting on the 30 days on that property and we'll see what happens.
Yes.
You're going to encourage him to at least get permit process and go from there.
As soon as that's up, we'll get over them again and see what happens.
And then the 933 West, the Reed property? Am I reading that correctly?
933, yep, 933. When I went by there, they... I don't know if you've been by that one or not. They've got a couple acres, half of it's full of pallets. They've got junk, trash, debris all over the place. And now they moved in a, I think it's probably 65 by 14 wide trailer. And it's about 15 feet off the edge of the road. So it's in violation. There's no permit for it. I couldn't get... I went, no one answered the door, so I sent him a letter telling him to call me. It was a certified letter. They got it. It came back signed. So I'm waiting for their 30 days to go up on that too.
And we'll move on to the undercurrent business. We had the violations on Hamlin property, and I see the Hamlins are here this evening. And Jim, first update us on what you've seen as progress.
Right.
You took a look at the property.
I went by there today. The property hasn't changed that you could notice. It's a little damp out there, but the trailers are in the same exact location that they were the last time I was there.
It's like a swamp out there.
Every time we come and get them, it would rain on them or it would get too muddy.
And he came and he took three cars out to the junk out back. And he came and there around the garage, you actually have to get up in the driveway to notice, I think. But he took a whole great big long trailer full of tires and all kinds of stuff off Terry did. It looks a lot better by the garage. Like I said, you have to get up there and look.
Do you know where he took them? Do you know where he took them?
He took them to junk somewhere. He got rid of them somewhere. It was no property. It was a junk place somewhere that took the tires and stuff. So I have no idea. He didn't tell me. All I know is he took them off. And he supposedly is supposed to be coming to get those two campers as soon as he can get in there to get them.
Three trailers?
Well, one of them is... One of them is, it doesn't belong to him. It belongs to...
What's Ben's last name?
I don't know what Ben's last name is. Ben, his girlfriend Bridget count, but she's been up to his house. She ain't been there. I talked to them about moving that out and there again, it's wet. I don't know. He said he had talked to somebody down here and they said it didn't have to be moved out. I don't know. They're supposed to be here and they're not here because I told him, I said, here's what we were told. Come down to that meeting so they can... You can talk to them, they can talk to you, tell you what it has to be done because, you know, we don't... We just want everything out there and get it all cleaned up like it's supposed to be.
You don't want to try and go by your old rules.
And so...
And everybody, you know, they think we're making it up.
Okay. What about like the trash and debris?
The trailer went off.
No, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's been there, like that old pool.
Yeah. I've got to pick it up because we need some... We've got a new pool, a different pool that we're going to put up this spring that we went to Northern Kentucky and got. But we need the metal things from that and then we're going to get rid of the old pool and get it out there. But we got... I really need to get out there and get those things up there and get that out of there.
Right. And but those are the things that you were supposed to be doing before you came to this meeting tonight. There's a lot you can do that's not getting done. And that's what the board's wondering, you know, how that's going to take place.
Well, maybe if I... Where I work at, I don't have to go tomorrow or anything. I'm going to get out tomorrow and get some of that stuff moved, picked up.
Like the pool, we could roll that up because it can be rolled up and put like where it can't be seen and it's nice and neat.
Well, I was out by the property last Thursday or Friday. I can't remember which one. And I would have to say at first glance, it looks similar to what the problem has been. But if you look a little closer, I could tell that there had been things done to the property to where it wasn't quite as cluttered as what it was. And I didn't see signs to where they were immediately still living in those trailers full-time if that came to a halt.
Yeah, so she's been staying, the one back to New York, she's been staying up at his house a lot. She don't even stay in that trailer.
So that did seem to be a little bit of improvement.
Yeah.
But as the enforcement officer was talking, I did see a lot of small things that if they could be gathered up, it would make a lot of appearance difference even though it's so wet and you can't get to the major items or more of the cars hauled off and that type of thing. So if those were areas that you can pay attention as we talked last time.
Yeah.
You know, there's a bag of trash or two sitting here and there. But there had been areas I saw over by the garage where that had been cleaned up and so forth. So there has been some progress made on the property.
And she cleaned up the front porch off. There was a bunch of trash and different stuff up there. We got... She got that done yesterday and cleaned up a bunch of the front there. And they're... I'm waiting for them to come and get that car out of the front yard there again. That's Terry Hall's. So I'm waiting for him to come and get that out of there, so...
What are the board's thought on it? How do you want to proceed?
Weather like it is, are we going to have to thank you brother and have a few more days?
I think so. I think we need to... They're making some progress and the opportunity that they came down this evening and willing to continue conversation with us goes a long ways on itself.
They're very sweet to weapon.
They've been too wet on getting the big thing down and so forth. You came in, you've mentioned someone was coming about the other...
That one camper that's there that you was talking about, the two is Terry Hall's and the other one is there. She had been staying there, but she doesn't stay there a lot. She's been staying up to his house and stuff and, you know...
She comes down, helps clean up.
Yeah, they've been helping us an awful lot. I mean...
Well, there's no doubt that people can have a camper stored on their property. When you start getting in three, four and all the junk that's around them is where it becomes a problem.
That's what I'm...
But they really aren't normally set up to be lived in full-time when they were on the property because of the health and the sewage problems and so forth. It's not a... Because we'll have times where someone's moved it in and turned it into a residence and that's a violation as such.
Right, right.
And, you know, we would have to see what the overall appearance and how things came about if you get the rest of the property cleaned up as far as the one camper being able to stay there. Because there's a lot of properties around that have a camper on the property as such, so we can be tolerant of that.
How long has that one been sitting there? One year?
It's not been sitting there very long at all, has it?
How long?
Probably four years in the summer, I'd say.
About three months, maybe?
Oh, maybe a little bit longer than that.
How many months?
Three months.
Three months? And that's the one right behind the house near the garage, right?
No, that's the one back there by that driveway that goes back to that one back out. It's the really nice one back there that...
One sits next to it with the tarp that's over top of it and this would be to the left of that.
Yeah, that's the one that doesn't have the tarp, but it's next to the one that's got the tarp.
Ours is a big wheel.
Right, I know which one you mean there.
My grandkids make it a little bit crazy every now and then and we have to get away from them, you know. Because my place has got to be cleaned up too. I mean, nobody's said nothing, but I'm trying to get them tired, redone. I got... I gotta get rid of it too. I'm going to haul this stuff off.
Well, I entertain a motion that we leave this table for another 30 days to our next meeting and take a look at it then. We had motion of second, all in favor? And opposed? Okay. We'll work with you for another 30 days and...
Appreciate that. I'm trying to go by your time to do everything the way you want.
There's a lot of area there you've got that if you could just gather up some of the small things and get trash out of there, even some things if you can't quite get them hauled out, if you could get it combined in one spot so when it comes time to load it up and it dries up, that you're able to do so a little more easy to where it looks like there's some progress. Because there has been some. I said, first time, just drive by, it doesn't appear so, but when you stop and look a little bit, I could tell there'd been some effort put into it.
I had all this stuff happening.
Yeah. We appreciate it then.
All right. Thank you.
Our next meeting will be March 3rd, same time, 5:30. Thank you for coming. I appreciate it. The next item on our agenda is an update on the two mile buffer zone. You want to update us on that, David, or I can either walk in or you can?
So we've put a 180 day clause on it, so probably from the day we did it, so that would be June sometime. We're going to meet tomorrow with members from the city plan commission and our plan commission and then a couple commissioners to try to start getting the things that need to be in an agreement to handle this area better than we have.
Any comments, any thoughts on the buffer zone, anything you want?
Is the city aboard or all aboard on this?
The city is aboard on its meeting and discussing how to resolve issues that are in the buffer zone. The city is not in favor from what I can understand in the letter they sent the county. They are not wanting to surrender zoning control of the buffer back to the county as such.
Did they give you a reason why?
They feel that because of... Not necessarily me, you may have saw the letter more. They feel they've invested a lot of dollars in road improvements and so forth and that they've had control over the buffer area since 1963 or so and they're not wanting to surrender that control. Can you enlighten anymore on that, David?
I'll get funky. There we go. 1963.
I think so. I think that's what he said.
So the city maintains the roads within that...
They don't maintain them, but they've made road improvements in that area. They said... I'll let the letter cover it here in a second.
I think the county did all that. At least I only see county work on it.
Well, you have Hutchinson Lane, for example, the widening of that project.
That's Tiff money.
Yeah, some of that, I don't know. Well, that's what he said.
So that's...
I understand the point there.
So that and the two mile terracing, I would say, but not much risk.
No, there wouldn't be anything there.
With Dawson Smith, the county's been taking care of that.
Did you find their letter?
Yep.
Yep, that read, that'd probably be the easiest.
All right. So, Dear Commissioner Little, the city of Madison is in receipt of your recent letter informing us that Jefferson County water commissioners has unilaterally rescinded the ordinance which has established a two mile buffer zone. As a follow-up to our meeting yesterday to discuss the matter, I'm informing you that we oppose this action. The city of Madison and Jefferson County have shared land use oversight responsibility since the two mile buffer zone, which was originally established in 1963. The two entities shared in the oversight of this zone through joint participation of our plan commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. In addition, the city of Madison has made substantial investment in the buffer zone to promote economic development, improve roads, sustain property values and deliver water and sewer utility services to residents in the buffer zone. It's unfortunate that this action was taken without discussing your concerns with either with us or either the city of Madison Plan Commission or the Jefferson Plan Commission first. I believe the issues that have been expressed can be resolved amicably and with proper communication and collaboration. Respectfully request that you immediately forbear enforcement of the ordinance for a period of 180 days so that we may work toward an amicable solution, which in my opinion is part education and reconciling some elements of our respective zoning requirements. The city of Madison and Jefferson County have common goals for our community that demand mutual respect and communication for us to be successful. We are committed to working together with Jefferson County to further our mutual goals and hope you are too. I'll look forward to hearing from you as soon as possible. Sincerely, Bob G. Courtney, Mayor of City of Madison.
Thoughts, comments?
So did you send a letter back to them?
Yes, we sent a letter saying...
What did that one say?
We've puzzled for 190 days. And I don't know if I have a copy of it.
Well, I'm going to propose a tomorrow evening's meeting. That'd be the first meeting that we have. I somewhat see that more as an organizational meeting and I think we need to first, before we get into actually discussing solutions or so forth, we need to identify what the problems are in the zone, set up a calendar as to how we think the group should proceed as to what meetings win and so forth. And, you know, at some point, once the problems and you could have a public meeting to invite a hearing and so forth in for the public to go in and address their concerns and their problems they expander in the zone. After all of that could be documented, then I think we would move to the stage of discussing possible solutions and putting forth something to both the city and the county that might be acceptable to both parties. And would like, if they're willing to, I'd like to have some kind of understanding within our group that we strive to a solution that is going to be approved by maybe two-thirds of the group or something like that instead of just a simple majority where we have something that there's pretty broad support on whatever solutions that we would bring into recommendation back. But I don't know that. I don't control that agenda or so forth. They may have different ideas on how to proceed and that and... But I think we are meeting in the commissioner's office, yes.
Thanks, David.
Would like to hear from the residents and the different type of problems that have occurred over the years. The most common thing that I hear as far as people that live in the two mile fringe, there's a feeling of, well, we have to abide by their rules, but we don't get any say in the elections as such. And then probably the most common though is the fact of lack of enforcement, that there's a county says it's city's problem, the city says it's county to a certain extent on the property maintenance and repair issues.
That's been going on a long, long time too.
Well, the action that the commissioner stood at least has brought it to the table, which is a positive, positive thing.
I have a question. You're saying that they're talking about letting them have 20%. How long is that going on? Forever or definitely a period of time?
20%.
Yeah, but you were going to... Talking about...
Oh, that's totally separate on the... I don't know where they're at on the jail. They'd be able to talk. That will have nothing to do with...
That's what I was...
No, that's totally separate. We're not in on those discussions. I don't want in on those.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure. We'll let the commissioners handle that one. Any other thoughts on that or... Anyone's welcome to attend. You know, I mean, it's a meeting that's open to the public as such tomorrow evening. They'll all be open to the public and I think we'll need to turn to some people that live in the zone to be able to get people out of public meeting so we can get some participation.
Yeah, at city hall?
This, tomorrow's at commissioner's office.
Okay, it was announced on the radio today.
Yes. I think that's critical to get the public involved in how it impacts the residents and business holders in some cases. But I do look like it's mostly organizational tomorrow, you know, that I have to decide if they want to have a chairman and if so, who and go from those lines. Have had a lot of discussion along those lines. And to look at who is there tomorrow evening, is this broad enough for the committee or do we need to expand it and so forth and get an idea and we can go from there. Let's see, I haven't talked to Mayor Courtney in great in detail on it. Have Mr. Little, son of Commissioner Little. Anything else on the zone? And we'll move on to new business that Jim can bring us up to date. We have two violations, one on the Ramona Leach property at 533 West.
Yep, 550...
5333 South 550 West.
And I've been on the phone and talked to them and the lady that actually owns the property is not in good health, but she has someone that works for her. And they've called me several times telling me that they're cleaning it up. The trailer that was moved onto the property is going to be relocated somewhere else. They just needed time to be helpful to get in there to get it out. I told them that the board could let me know and I could get back with them on how long it would get in a week or two weeks or 30 days to take it out. They don't want it there. He's cleaning up the property. The property had debris and trash and he's cleaning that up. That's going to be done by the end of the weekend and then it'll be a matter of getting a trailer out of there.
Now, this is one that has a large stone house built in behind.
Yes.
And this is just so everyone's on the same page. This was a trailer that we thought we'd been so successful. It changed ownership and we had it down on New Bethel Road and it showed up back over here. And I think they actually sold it to the people, so it was a kind of a hands-off transaction, but we still got the trailer to deal with. But it is positive they've moved towards moving it off versus this of turning into a storage building.
Totally. When he moved it, I wanted to know where it was going before he moved it.
I think they got electricity hooked up to the trailer. I've seen a light on here.
Well, it's just a...
It might be an extension cord, you know, and it's just sitting about like...
Right, it's kind of lopsided.
Yeah, it's lopsided.
The tires are still very bad for it.
I think about all we can do on it is for you to keep an eye time-wise and let them know that the ground gets solid enough because it sits back off the road in the field enough until it dries up a little bit. There's not any way they can get it out of there without tearing things all up.
It actually appears to be a construction trailer. I haven't been inside of it.
It's a full-size mobile home though.
It's maybe full-size, but it's like a 50 footer instead of a normal 70 or probably 12 foot wide instead of 14. But yes, I'll keep an eye on it and I'll hold him to what he promised me he would do. How long do you want to give him?
I think you're just going to have to play it by ear and see what the weather's like and so forth. You know, there's not much point in putting a certain number of days just to extend it out down the road.
Well, it seems to work better if I can give them a goal. If I put a date out there and say we want it by this date and when they don't, it's usually shortly thereafter.
Well, you're in a good position to put a date in.
Yes.
You can take care of that problem for us.
I think we're okay.
And then report back to us if they don't meet the date.
Yeah. What was the other one?
The other one is the Terry Hall property on 7569 West Jones Road. That's a new one for me.
Terry Hall is the gentleman that they were just talking about who had trailers on their property. He's been moving...
I was wondering.
He's been moving debris and tires and cars from the Pope Road location to the Jones Road location. I sent him a letter, certified, he signed it, it came back. And so they know, they know that they have to clean up. They've also brought in a storage shed and it's too close to the road. They didn't get a permit for that. So that was one of the things that I noted in the letter that they had to take care of. But until he comes in or we get a hold of it, I gave him 30 days to correct everything. When that 30 days is up, we'll take another look, see what we can do about maybe giving them another letter or having them actually come in and, you know, tell us what they're going to do.
Do you want to have anything else?
Just add a few else. These complaints are coming from adjoining landowners?
I don't know. I haven't seen the complaints on all of these. There may be a situation where it's adjoining landowners. There may be some that Jim has seen when he's been out on something else. It could be a combination of both. I know, for example, the trailer that's down on, that we just talked about on Leach property, I drove by and saw it sitting there. I think they may have heard from other sources on it as well, but it was the one we just moved off of Bethel over here, so it kind of jumped out at me.
That's what's happened to the one on 933. That came from Innis Road.
Okay.
It just looked like they just hooked on to it and pulled it off and, well, where did it go, you know?
Give them a lap of the county and see if it's go this way.
Then I should have said something at the beginning of the meeting. We kind of covered introductions before the meeting started one way or the other. But David Ferguson is here. He's a new member on our plan commission, appointed by the commissioners, will also be serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals. The commissioners have an appointment. It has to be the same person to both boards that they have there. So we welcome David on board. And the Republicans had a caucus and we now have a new surveyor who is also part of our board, Mike Pittman. So we're very glad to have everybody here and...